Sure.
Alright, everybody.
Okay, now we're official now. So we won't be in trouble for not recording. Okay, we're gonna share the screen. Everybody see that?
No.
No. Can't, we've gotta share. Share. And. What's both participants?
But you're on the wrong screen, right?
Yeah, oh, that's right.
You gotta go to which screen?
More. Forget every time.
We go through this, I thought I was the only one that couldn't remember.
Yeah.
Can you, you have to go to share screen?
Share screen.
Okay.
Oh, choose the screen that we have.
Yes.
One person's part of the time, only host, that's right, but then we have to figure out.
You have to figure out which screen it's on, no.
That's weird.
I'm glad it's not just me.
Do you have to like drag it?
Yeah, drag that over and see if you can.
I couldn't be.
And that's the screen we'll share. See, I still can't see that screen?
No.
No.
We thought we had this all day out, I thought it was just me. Somewhere, it's, it's cousin on a different screen.
Sharing options. Only host. There's another.
You're supposed to be on the screen where you can pick which screen.
Oh, here we go.
You know, screaming picture.
Screen to share. There we go, everybody.
Now can you see it?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. We tend to pick the right screen. Okay. So we're ready to go.
No, I guess we're ready to go.
Okay. And you have to do it on that. You have to click on that screen to move forward or run it on that one.
Alright, so.
Okay, you wanna go over the agenda?
Sure, um, so tonight we're just gonna run through a few things to start with. We'll just introduce our, our new member of our planning commission. Uh, then kind of go over downtown master plan update information. And then a little bit about the CARPO or Certified Arkansas Planning Official Trainings that we've talked about in the past. As those are some things that we finally have a little bit of information about how we can get everybody signed up. We've got at least three folks here that are interested. And if there are any of you guys that are interested, we can start to try and figure out who will start and then there will be future phases that we can get everybody looked into as well. And then yeah, tying the comprehensive land use plan discussion together, it's hard to believe we've been chipping away at this for almost a year, but as you know, it's been a little busy around here, so I guess that's what stretched us out for this long. And then we'll, we'll close out with a few comments. So getting started, new appointment, Mark Cloud, as I'm sure all of you guys and gals know, has been appointed and confirmed. Confirmed by the, by the city council the other day. Mark, would you like to say anything to, to the rest of the commission?
Uh, yeah, just gladly part of the community, hope to look forward to working alongside everyone to further Springdale Ford. I mean, I think that's all or go right, so thanks.
Cool. Uh, next month, what we're gonna do is we're gonna brush up on a few things with the city attorney's office and we'll have kind of a brief discussion of stuff like conflict of interest, other, other topics, just to cover those kind of odds and ends that, that we'll need to as we just kind of introduce or, or bring in, bring in the new folks and, and refresh for the older folks.
There are a couple of things that came out of the last legislative session that ours was make sure everybody's aware of, because I don't know that we really spent a lot of time talking about what come out of the last session, so we'll go over some of that stuff too.
Um, in terms of the downtown master plan update, so back in October, we met with H3 and DSA that we can work on the initial phases and timelines. And so we'll be jumping into things in more detail in March and so, let's see, I think I have, no, I guess that's further on down the line. Um, I threw in a slide, I guess I must have thrown it in on down in here, so my apologies for having to skip ahead to that. But if you haven't already, go ahead and jump into the DSA page. We've got it on here for you if, if you'd like to check it. And control, there we go. And we'll bring that over. And we've got surveys for business owners and, and just residents of the city to take a look and think of how they would like to see this updated master plan look. So this is the page on the, on the DSA's website, scroll down a little and you can see Springdale resident survey, downtown Springdale business survey, as well as the Springdale visitors survey and, and some public workshops that will be happening come March and May.
One of those workshops will be when we meet directly with the planning commission, so y'all have input into that. And then the second one will be after the draft plan is ready, so you have the chance to look at that before it goes to public hearing. The surveys are all in English, Spanish, and Marshallese. We're getting a few results back in Spanish. I think we got our first Marshallese response this week. Uh, Jill's pushing out to those groups and trying to get more responses from the Hispanic and the Marshallese community, so we get their input. Um, we'd like for you guys to share this with everybody that you can to get as many results as we have. I think we had 474.
Yeah.
Fifty surveys back already. They did some intercept surveys at Christmas on the Creek and got a pretty good, pretty good response then, but everybody needs to just send this out. If you go to their Facebook page, you can share it there and just get it out to as many people as we can get it out to.
I can't remember, how many were we aiming for survey wise?
We're, we're aiming for, you know, five or 600. We're, we're pretty close to the number already. We just don't have the Hispanic and Marshallese participation that we wanted yet. But the, the push just really came out last week anyway, and they'll be hitting it again. You may have seen the press release, there'll be a couple more and some direct contacts with people. There is a steering committee that's been established and they will meet in the next month or so, and then they will meet with a consultant on a one-on-one basis when they get here too. And so we've got, we've got lots of things going on with the downtown master plan update.
Any questions? Thoughts?
Just what is, can you give us just a little bit of detail about what the, what this actually, the scope of this revised plan includes? Are we talking about everything? Are we talking about form-based code, uh, the different districts? Or can you just kind of give us a little info about exactly what this iteration looks like?
Well, one of the first things that I, that I wanted to do with this is kind of give us an update of where we are. We had a plan adopted in 2015. How have we managed to, to move forward this, to identify our strengths and weaknesses? I didn't want somebody who started all over. And then to kind of look at where we are and what needs to change with emphasis this time on parking and housing for sure, because that's two aspects of the plan. We really didn't delve in too much the first time around. We all wanted a parking problem in downtown Springdale, because everybody's down here, and now we need to deal with that and see how we move forward with that. Housing is kind of taking on a new emphasis in the region as a whole, and we need to plug in how downtown Springdale's gonna work with that, so housing is the other element of it. And then just kind of a general update. Now I'll start over, just a general update as far as that's, that, that's going on. Uh, we have a more robust, as I just said, communication plan, so we get more input from the diverse community that we have, because we had some last time, but probably not as good as we probably need to. And that's, that's the major emphasis of what we're doing. Now, we also will do a review of the form-based code. One of the aspects of when they're here, we're gonna kind of look at it. We've been compiling a list of things that we know that need to be addressed. Uh, weaknesses, explanations, maybe put it in a little bit different format so it's a little bit easier to understand. And so if you got issues or comments or questions, you need to make sure you get them to us so we get all that kind of stuff addressed. We're not looking at a major rewrite, we're just looking at it as, as a tweet to the form-based code. So that's pretty much it. Okay, anybody have any other questions about that?
Patsy, with the return of about 400 surveys or so, so far, are you picking up any threads or any trends that you might want to talk about?
I doubt if any of that's been analyzed yet. We're kind of waiting until we get a little bit better information before we do some analysis of the kind of comments that we're getting. We'll probably get that, maybe some draft information in March or if it came out of the surveys and that will be brought out at the public meeting, but nobody's really asking to summarize any of that yet.
Okay, thanks.
Another thing that we need to talk about is what kind of infrastructure improvements we need in downtown to continue to grow as we're, as we are now, what we're looking at in the future. Infrastructure like water and sewer, street improvement, street skates, that kind of stuff. That's the other aspect of it, I forgot to put in there. Other questions or comments? It's gonna be a busy spring, a lot of stuff going on. Okay?
Um, what was I gonna say? I was gonna piggyback on what you said, I just completely lost it. Mustn't have been too important. Oh, I know what I was gonna say. So in terms of this, the interpretations of the surveys, we're, we're relying on, on the DSA to do a lot of that work. Um, they're, they're the ones tasked with doing a lot of, basically all of the outreach and doing the, the sifting through of those surveys. That way that allows us to focus more on, on what we need to do, because I mean, there's, there's a lot going on and, and we just don't have the bandwidth to be able to sift through all of those surveys. So luckily we've got them to, to do some of that work for us.
Yeah. And they're geared up to do that, they just haven't started yet. I stream while we do some of that too.
So, again, we'll jump into more of that in March. Um, so to the Certified Arkansas Planning Official Discussion, they finally, within the last week, come out with this structure. Um, initially we were hesitant, but we've, we've kind of chewed on it a little bit and it, it, it's better than we were thinking. So starting in February, it'll be one day a, a week that it will be from 6:00 to 9:00 PM, a live Zoom meeting, uh, or one day a month rather, I'm sorry.
Once a month.
And then that'll go from February all the way to July, so six straight months. And each course is 65 bucks and it'll just kind of go through a lot of the basics. This is something that myself and a number of the other folks in the, the region and across the state have completed. And three of the, the guys and gals here in our office are, are looking at starting that up in February. And so we're, we had a little bit of interest, I think Dale might have been the only, only one of you that was interested at this point. But just let us know if you're interested and, and getting that going. Otherwise, we've got 9:00 AM to noon, starting in August and going till February, and that of course we'll be skipping over the month of December to accommodate people's holiday plans. But yeah, just feel free to shoot me an email if it's something that you're interested in. You have, you don't have to do all of them at the same time, if you wanna kind of pick and choose and, and over the course of a couple of years knock it out, that's, that's cool too. We can, we can try and do our best to work with you and work with the, the folks there in Little Rock that organize all of this.
And the cost of the course can be, is, is covered in my budget if you decide you want to do some of those, so let us know if, if you're interested in any of those. The timing, we were kind of worried about, you know, 6:00 to 9:00 on Wednesday evenings and 9:00 to noon on Wednesday mornings is, that's kind of a rough time, but they assure us that's what their surveys said everybody wanted to do. So just let us know if you're interested. If you're not, we understand that too, you know, but it's open for anybody who wants to use it. Questions, comments?
And how many people so far have signed up for that from our group?
Well, we have three staff members that are gonna sign up for it. Our three newest staff members, don't have anybody else yet, because this just came out yesterday.
Uh, I think the end of, the end of last week, I think is when it came out. Like I said, if, if you're interested in, in details, shoot me an email and we can have, we can have a phone call or, or, or shoot me a text and we can have a phone call. I can, can run through some stuff with you and, or show you the, the materials from the previous iteration of the program, because before the, the world ended, it, it was in three sections and then kind of a, uh, at-home reading capstone project. So it'll be a little bit different in terms of its structure.
And we'll send you just out an email.
Yeah, would you mind, yeah, I was gonna say just maybe next week sending us out an update on who, who, who has expressed interest?
For sure, I guess if you guys want, um, in the morning I can have Debbie send you this email or, or whatever, so that way everyone can have a shot to look through things. If any of you have questions, feel free to reach out and we can, we can run through, run through that stuff and then maybe by the following week, we can have a pretty solid list of who's interested.
Okay, cool.
Cool. Alright, anything else? Cool. Alright, so we've got that stuff in case we need it. Patsy, I'll just kind of let you take over.
We kind of have a cover put together, also put this together before we left, just to kind of, what we're looking at this time is more of a publication instead of everything trying to be on the front and back of land use plan, because it's really hard to keep up with that direction. So you know, if anybody's got any comments, we, we're not set in stone, but that's kind of how we started with it. What, you wanna move on to the next one? Somebody send me comments if they've got any. Really what we haven't done is looked at the map itself to see if you see any major areas that you think need to be changed, based on what we've been talking about, our land use goals for each of the different categories, are there any major changes that we need to talk about? One of the things we talked about is creating some areas of mixed use. And do we want to identify on the land use map, areas that we think need to be highlighted for mixed use development? And a lot of that could be areas around where we have commercial concentrations as a, as a buffer before you get to the residential development. Uh, the other thing is this overlay district shadow needs to come off of there and we need to put some land use categories underneath it. And that may be an area where mixed use development is pretty much what we're looking for in that area, where the possibility of that, at least along 48th Street and, or uh, Jean George Boulevard and 412, that kind of stuff. But see if anybody's got any ideas about things that need to be changed on the land use map itself. Lots of times we started with that, this time we started with all the goals and, and policy statements rather than looking at the map first. So kind of throw it open to anybody that's got comments. I know we're hitting you kind of cold with this, you may want to spend some time looking at it. It is on the city's website, so if you want to go look at that, identify some areas that you think we need to do some changes, so kind of throw it open, does anybody got any comments right off the top of their head to start with?
Way too much low-density residential is my, my comment.
Okay.
I mean, I, I think, I think, I think we need to shift most of that, um, or as much of it as we can to medium density at minimum. And then definitely need to look at, I mean, if you, look, where's their high density on here? You know, right in that one little suction in the middle, you know, there's some orange for high density. We've got to have more medium high-density zonings, because it is almost impossible to get them rezoned when they're, when they're in a land use plan as low-density residential. It's almost impossible, you know, to get them rezoned up because of, you know, just general, you know, lots of reasons. But anyhow, there's, I think there's way too much low-density residential on this map right now to accommodate our growth. That's my thought.
Anybody else want to weigh in on that? Or any other topics?
Yeah, I, I mean, I would just agree. I think if we want to continue to see growth inside the city limits, um, that that's something we're gonna have to look at. As land is becoming rarer and more expensive.
I think something, sorry, go ahead.
We got the, right now it looks like, well, the southeast is really booming with, with subdivisions. And then we do have some, we do have some apartments down, that, out that way, but the mixed use, we might want to throw some in the areas closer to the parks, uh, on, on the southeast and the northwest. I know we got a pod up there on the northwest. But we might want to consider putting them on the map before, like I said, like before the low density really hits it.
What would your, would be your definition of what is median density? Is it 12 units per acre? Is it 16 units per acre? And high density is anything over 24? Or what, what would we say is if, if you use the term median density, you're talking all the way from SF2, which is four units per acre, to what would be the maximum number of units for median density? 12, which is what we have now? Peyton, I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
You, it goes from four to 12 per acre, that's medium density?
Uh huh.
Yeah.
Well, four, four units per acre is not medium density in my opinion.
I agree.
Okay, so let's start, let's start by moving the bottom up then, because that, that's not, um, four units per acre is an average, you know, quarter acre lot or, you know, close to there. That's not, that's not medium density for sure. I would say, I mean, guys, I don't know, I'm, I'm not, I don't know anything about this, but twice that seems like medium density.
I mean, I would say.
I mean, yeah. Go, what, what are you saying, Shane?
I would say anything over 24 units is high density. Um, and I mean, 12 to 16 units is medium density to me. A foot four, four is low to me.
Yeah, I just think we tend to look at this and like, and while, yes, I do think there needs to be, any, you know, in a lot of other places in the country, even eight units per acre is low density. So I think we just have to kind of shift where Springdale has been the last 20 years and maybe what was high density in the previous 20 and look at where we're headed and what is high density. I, I, you know, in lots of cities, man, you're not getting into high density until you're talking about a lot of units, 24 plus per acre. I just, I just feel like we need to, we've got to shift that definition, because four is definitely not, eight is questionable, but you know, I just don't think with, uh, um, I, I just don't think, I just don't think we can sustain if we keep calling, you know, four units an acre, medium. I just think it.
I can tell you in the past, if you talked about more than 24 units per acre, everybody freaked, because 24 units per acre was hard for everybody to imagine. And now I think you're right, I think we're seeing a different trend to something a little bit more dense. And then you get into the question about high-rise and what, you know, where are the best places for those? Uh, in the past, we didn't put a lot of high density on the, on the map for that area of reason, because it freaks people out.
One of the cool things that we have going on, this map doesn't quite do a great job at, at displaying in, in large part, because part of what I'm gonna describe in a second was not in existence at the time. But the form-based code area, smack dab in the middle, as Peyton had, had alluded to, that is of course where we have the highest density and that's kind of prevents us from having to explicitly say that this is going to be X number of units per acre, which is normally in that range that you said was going to scare most people, and, and I tend to agree. But this map doesn't show the form-based code, the seed districts that also allow us to slowly but steadily expand upon that form-based code area in a way that will, if, if people are, are using it properly, and I think we're getting to a point where they're, they're, they're moving in that direction, that will allow us to do that without making any sort of tectonic changes to the way that the code is written. And over the course of time, we can allow that to do its job in terms of increasing density downtown. And then over the course of the next several years, maybe as there is more of a thrust to have greater changes to what we're labeling as certain densities, we, we can do just that. I, does that make any sense?
And, and one of the areas might be the southwest overlay district. Might be a good area for a seed district that is totally unrelated to downtown, but we could have that mixed development and have that more intense development in that area. And some of those conversations have been had with the developer or the owner of a lot of that property, so that might be an area we see that happen. Other areas of town, I, I don't know, I don't have a feel for the other areas, but. Anybody else got any comments? Let, let's talk about the older sections of town that set up in, you know, the grid on the west of 71, that older section of town that's been there forever. Do we think we're gonna see a lot of redevelopment in that area? Or is that an area where the low income, I mean, the, the low-density housing stays? And we're really looking at the areas.
Which section, Patsy, you returned?
Like from Huntsville to, to Sunset and Pleasant Street to, uh, 40th Street.
I mean, I, yeah, I mean, I think all that in there has got to be upgraded from low density to medium density at a minimum, because I, I think there's also a lot of opportunity in some of those areas where, as that, as it redevelops, we could get higher, you know, we could get more gentler density, more density there if, if we had those, you know, if we had that identified on the land use plan, that's the core section of the city. Probably, you know, even a lot of that, we would, if we re-looked at it, would probably fall more into maybe even medium density than, you know, than single fam, like again, yeah, like that right, exactly what you're going on.
See, there's really more median density residential that's already zoned for that, but it doesn't reflect on the land, well, yeah, it does too, because we put that median density too. That core of the city, is it really an area that for redevelopment, do we want it open up to a single-family lot that could have two residents on it, but it doesn't meet the form-based code? I mean, that's always been an issue in the past, because we have no way to regulate that if we wanted to add a second ADU or something to it. We don't have a provision in our current zoning ordinance to allow that ADU to, to happen unless we're doing it in a form-based code area. So if we resign that to, or make that median density, those single-family houses, could they put a apartment in the back without having any standards for how that happens? That's the questions you get into when you start some of those kind of discussions. Now, I'm not advocating that the form-based code should be everywhere, but it does tend to let us deal with the increasing density in a different manner than what the standard zoning classification does.
I hate to be the new guy to speak already, but I think, I think what we all know is the price of land is going so high that if you can't get multiple units on an acre, it's almost impossible to get the cash flow. So I think we won't develop in either personal or business, we have to allow people to be able to put as many units of mixed sense on an acre as possible. And I think, while the form-based code, I like that for a lot of reasons, you just mentioned, Patsy, but also I think some of this stuff is perception. And I think Peyton made a great point. I think by just moving our medium base, um, medium density from four to eight at minimum will kind of give the perception, but we understand that we need to allow for more units to be placed in, in that acre. And whether, you know, I'm sure there's more talking points to that, but I think that's a, to me, that's a simple, not simple, but that's, that's one way we can ensure people that are looking at Springdale, that we understand that, you know, you need to put more units on an acre to make this feasible, because cost of land is just, is so high. And I can tell you nightmare stories from a standpoint of how much it costs per acre the farther north you get. And I just think that could be an advantage to, to Springdale if we can just make it seem like we're open to. And, um, I just think that could be an advantage to, to Springdale if we can just make it seem like we're open to. Higher density development. I know at some, you know, five, ten years ago, that was a. That was a scary thing because apartments were all Lindsay apartments and that meant certain type of clientele. We're all over those, uh, but I don't know if you guys looked around, but there are a lot of apartments going up and a lot of them cost a whole lot more than my mortgage does.
I think part of this has got to be the, the, the naming. Also, I'll say this, the naming of our zonings. Very confusing and not aligned with what they, the SF MF. Totally gives people the wrong impression about what that zoning is for and people will come out. And shout against an MF knowing nothing else about it. So I think we should really think about that too.
That's true. That's true. So are we saying then that low density would be everything up to eight units per acre? Is everybody comfortable with that? Anybody not comfortable with it? Let's go that route. Then you have a comment?
I was just saying, I think eight is probably a reasonable cutoff between low and medium. Um, what we have now at four is too low.
Okay. So if we went low density up to eight units per acre. A medium density going from eight to sixteen? Or eight to twenty-four is a medium density and everything over twenty-four would be high density? Is that too drastic of a change? Anybody got any problems with that?
I'd support the eight to sixteen. I think once we get to twenty-four. It really gives that connotation of being higher density.
So anything over sixteen then would be high density? So it's.
Yes.
It's up to eight is low, eight to sixteen would be medium and anything over sixteen becomes high density. Is that what we're saying?
Well. I mean, I think so. That sounds reasonable to me.
It does to me when you, when you take into account the, uh. The amenities that are required for the, the medium and the high density to, to get the additional. That's been the problem I've seen is when we do a higher density development. The amenities are pretty paltry and it really does turn into everyone's worst fear because. It wasn't done well. It was done to maximize profits.
So can we talk through that for just a second? The, the, because that could be a problem. This amenity thing that they. If they hit that, they get a break on the number of units somehow. Can you, can you? Um, because like Ben said, we all know we've seen really pitiful amenities. And like, what about just remove, you know? Working that somehow too as part of the different zoning.
Well, the multifamily design standards were set to give incentives to go to the maximum in that zoning classification. So if you wanted eight years per acre, you could get six and you had to gather amenities to get to eight. There was sixteen is twelve. What we're seeing is they come in and ask for sixteen. Whatever they can get the minimum they want without having to do any incentive. It's the way around it. And so I think that's something that's going to have to be addressed. With the minimum standards that are required. Uh, the idea is getting circum- circumvented because we come in and ask for a, a sixteen and we don't have to do anything. Because all we really wanted was twelve and enough. And you know, I've talked about that in the past. They want sixteen, so they'll come in and ask for a. A twenty-four and they don't have to do anything to get to sixteen. That's a problem. And then we have to deal with that somehow. I don't have the answers for that. That means we got to rewrite multifamily design standards and are, are we ready to do that? Do we think? We're better than we ever have been. I, I would say that for sure.
And that was kind of my fear that I was expressing earlier when I was talking about the layout of the map and the way that it looks is. The, we're, we're kind of going down a rabbit hole of now we're reworking a lot of the code. As opposed to just sharpening the comprehensive land use plan. Whereas if we can, I guess, kind of do some of the discussing that we're doing now. In order to better prepare for these, um, changes over the course of the next several years, as I mentioned.
I think we're going to have to address the standards as bad as I hate to say that. I think we're going to have to in order to be able to have any impact on. Multifamily design standards or multifamily development in Springdale. We're going to have to. Revise us. I mean, they were written at a time when we didn't, we very rarely got anything more than twelve units per acre and life is not like that anymore. So, okay. Besides the change in too much low density, what about commercial? Uh, areas on the map? Do we see any major concerns with those?
I mean, one, one that I noticed is just highway four twelve. Just, you know. Neighborhood commercial only. For four twelve, you know, going on.
Oh, that's a nice regional commercial on there though, isn't it? Yeah. Yeah, that's, that's neighborhood, but those are those areas where it's backing up to residential development. Does that need to be changed? And maybe that's areas where we create that mixed use, where we get a higher density residential use with. Mixed use development and so, and some of that areas is four twelve redevelops.
Yeah, I was even talking about, I think even further out east, you know, it just kind of. You know, it just kind of stops right there. Um. And I can't tell what, maybe at Hilton Road. But, but seriously, we don't want like, you know, just regular houses popping up along through there too. So I just thought maybe carry that. Carry that all the way out, you know?
Some of that's outside of the city limits, gets it to our.
Okay, maybe that, is that why we stopped it? Okay.
Um, I think it actually goes to Snore Road, maybe. I, I can't tell from that either. Um, Harrington's the one that's between Hilton and, and that very end of where the commercial is. And so I don't know. I remember the name of that street up there.
I just know that if you look in any area where there's a whole lot of yellow and there's no pink, that means that. People who live in those areas have no access to commercial services. So whether that's mixed use or whatever, these, these areas are just. They're deserts with no. You know, commercial development identified out there.
And Shannon, you talked about that neighborhood commercial is something we need to pick more locations where that can be. For a less intense commercial use, but something like you said Peyton, that the service is the neighborhood.
Yeah, I think we talked about, um, the Don Tyson Parkway and, um. Butterfield Coach Road area and then maybe even, um. And then any area where we put a roundabout. A new roundabout, those areas and, and they may, I, my eyes aren't that good. I would have to zoom in on this. But that may be on here, but, um. Uh, even out west where some of the new roundabouts are, um. I know we probably have Elm Springs Road and that roundabout, that's probably commercial, but some of the other ones. Like, um, Harbor. And, um, where that new roundabout is. I don't know if it shows commercial right. Does, does it show commercial on that? I know the roundabout actually isn't on there, but.
You gotta remember, roundabouts didn't exist when we did this map.
Right, right.
We, we've.
I just know that people feel like those should be commercial, even though it, those. Those roundabout corners in that area, they feel like they should be commercial. I don't know if they necessarily should be, but. People sure think they should be.
Well, where, where Harbor comes into one twelve is one of the ones that came into mind for me. We need some kind of. Lot commercial or neighborhood commercial at that area because it's going to be a roundabout and then some of those, okay? We'll look into those kinds of things. Other, other major things like the industrial. Does anybody have any problem with the areas that we show as industrial on the maps? That's not something that's changed a lot, other than that area that the Public Facilities Board. Purchased up around Kendrick. That will all remain. Industrial and the area in, in Bethel Heights that came into the city along the railroad track, a lot of that probably would become. Uh, industrial.
So Patty, Bethel Heights is going to be on our new, on our new land use map. They'll be included here.
Yes, they will be. Right.
Yeah.
Any other areas that you see that are outstanding that we need to, to spend a little time looking at? We've got to get to a position where we can actually do some map updates and hopefully. Clayton will be our actual, will be assigned to us where we can get some things done. We haven't had a lot of mapping service in the last. Year or so and we've got to get that tied down a little bit better. So we have more help. In getting the, the maps updated and the land use plan drafts out so you guys can start looking at them.
Yeah, I did, I just go back to any of those places, any of those roads that look like, that are in the. Kind of outer edges of town that look like they could be medium density. That's, that's the last thing I'd say is that we should look at kind of. Preempting that we know what will happen there and we should just preempt it and zone it that way.
One of the areas that's, is a concern when you start putting a bunch of. Medium density out there and we don't have water and sewer facilities to it, it kind of creates a false sense because there's no sewer to it. And so we've kind of held some of that back because we don't have any sewer expansion in those areas.
Historically, low density was kind of a holding pattern for those areas outside of where, where transportation and infrastructure. Existed. So it may not, it probably won't be same low density long-term, but it is for now. One area that I thought needed a little attention is Wagon Wheel Road interchange. Uh, it seems to me like commercial probably needs to extend further east than what it does right now.
Pretty well, that's up to that commer- that residential that's already up there. I don't see a lot more residential expansion in those areas, especially to the north. With the four twelve bypass coming through there too.
Exactly. I think that, that whole, that, that yellow block right there probably should be. Commercial rather than low density.
I agree. And there is a bigger push from the highway department to get. The six twelve bypass extended all the way to two sixty-five. So I think we're going to see a change. If they're really moving forward with that under the same timeframe we thought they are, I think we're going to see some major changes in that whole area up in there too. So that whole area up in there, north of Wagon Wheel is probably in for some major changes in the next ten years. The highway department called and asked us what kind of trails we wanted under the interchange at. At two sixty-five and, and seventy-one in the six twelve bypass, which is a major step. As far as I'm concerned, from the highway department to ask at the time. So. Other areas, what we, what we have shown on here is the parkland that the city owns already. Is it something we think we need to look at and? I'll back up and say we probably need a master park plan update because it hasn't been done in many, many more year, many, many years. Is that something we need to look at? Some other areas where we think park development ought to be one? Anybody got any thoughts on that? No? Okay. We'll kind of let that one sit for now.
Everywhere. We should put, we should put parks everywhere.
You know, there's, there's two schools of thought. There's a lot of people think we need to do more neighborhood parks. I think that's always been the position that. Neighborhood parks were hard to take care of. Do we need to look at some more neighborhood type parks instead of regional parks like we've been doing in the past?
I love the idea of a, of a neighborhood park.
Yeah.
Isn't that what they all used to be?
It's what they all used to be, yeah.
I mean, the, the park was for everybody in the neighborhood. It wasn't regional, so.
Yeah. But we've done very well at, at, at developing the regional park network.
Oh, yeah, for sure.
Some very nice facilities, but we don't have a lot of. Neighborhood parks. And so that may be something we wanted to encourage. We may not identify those, but we start with the idea. Neighborhood parks is something that's good for the city as a whole.
I mean, I love the idea of this one down here off of Mill, you know, by the, uh. Mill and Sanders down there by the trail and, and that, you know, like a little pocket park. Thing. That's great. I love that.
Something else that would be helpful is just connectivity to the regional parks. Like if, it'd be awesome. There's a way to get from. Don Tyson, the Tyson Park on the west side where I live. To the park that's on the east side of Don Tyson, other than a car and on that Don Tyson Parkway that's like a drag strip.
Which, which is another aspect that we need to work on is our master trail update. And a sidewalk development plan. And as you all know, it's now included in my department, the trust coordinator and sidewalk planning. Portion of that, I think we need to overlay that on with this and that's something we need to look at this year too. I don't have anybody hired yet. I have a job description out there and advertising for people. If you know anybody who's interested in. Calling in a planner to active transportation position. More so, but that's trails coordination, sidewalk development, because there's lots of areas of town. We just need plain sidewalks built. Because they're not there as much as we do major, and I'm a major trail developer too, but we need to get people from. Their neighborhoods to the trail system with some local sidewalks. So that's something else that we need to work on. And I think there's a few comments about that in the land use plan we need to make as well. Okay. Other issues, anything else? We can go on and talk for hours. We, we're trying to hold this for about. An hour, not to take up all of your time, but are there any other major issues we haven't identified yet that anybody's really concerned about?
Patsy, there's just a trend that I, that I have a, it's, I, and I don't know if we can, you know. Like mitigate this through the land use plan or whatever, but just the, this kind of trend that I'm seeing of. Like us building. Things that are maybe a thousand square feet, you know, they're very small buildings. That are drive-through, car oriented. Um. Which, I'm not saying that that's never appropriate, but I have a, I have a concern. About the lifespan of these kind of properties and if, and if we're. You know, if we're allowing for a very small footprint building. Which we get, you know, maybe minimal, minimal property tax on. It's going to create a lot of traffic and a lot of people driving and a lot of safety concerns. What is the city getting for that? You know, like what are we getting in return for those type of developments? If that particular restaurant or, you know, you know, drink place or whatever. Goes out of business, what, how do we, you know, repurpose these properties if? We are just, you know. If, if we begin to allow too many of the, too many of these to pop up. It's something I've seen in, you know, probably I guess since the pandemic in twenty twenty-one, just that, you know. And I understand that, you know, businesses want drive-throughs and I'm not an anti-drive-through guy, but I just think. In the right place. And I'm seeing them kind of pop up in places where we already have serious. Traffic and safety concerns and I don't know if that's a land, you know, can we? Take care of that through the land use plan or some other measure, but it's a little bit concerning to me. You know, I've seen a few of these.
Specific examples to try and create a, a, a picture for us, because.
Well, I, you know.
Seven Brew? Yeah, the one that, the one that, the one that came up before was Seven Brew Coffee. Where they've got a double lane going in, the double lane coming out, people serving, and that is the model that they use nationwide.
And Starbucks has adopted that too, but I, I was also, um, thinking about the one from the last. And I know, and I love that. Uh, the Mexican restaurant. Down on Sunset. Yeah. Yes. Yeah, well, it's great food, but you know, that's not my concern, but we had a, we have another development plan there. That has like, um, you know, like another drive-through around the other side. So I'm just worried about a little bit. That building wasn't going to be a very large building, wasn't really. Maybe customer, you know, like foot traffic or people sitting in there. So those are just a couple. Yeah, Seven Brew's one of them. Starbucks is one of them.
You know, we don't have a. Or a maximum size for different kind of commercial uses. Is that something we might want to do? I don't know.
No, I mean, I mean, I'm a, I'm a big proponent of small, like I don't have a problem with small. I just. Um. I, there's not, it's, it's the same way that I feel about like student housing projects. Okay, there might be a need for that, but the way that they build and design those properties. Is really for one use. Those can't be like. Those can't be like repurposed into multifamily housing. Similarly with these, if they're a thousand square foot in a drive-through, that's not office space. That's not, you know, I mean, what is it? And I worry that if we, you know, just kind of like allow them to go wherever, we're going to end up with, maybe it's a fad, maybe it's not, but I just don't think it's, you know, really great placemaking if we don't think about where should they be? And then, you know, protect those areas for those type of businesses, but they certainly shouldn't be in just any commercial zoning. Uh, that's my, that's my opinion.
My other concern is on storage units. Yeah. If the fad of storage units dies down, what are we going to use those buildings for?
I perceive storage units as being even scarier than what you were describing.
Yeah, yeah. I I would love them in the same thing as well. I mean, we've seen a lot of those. You know, a lot of those come up in the last, you know, couple of years. So those are just a couple of things that I don't know. I mean, I don't have a solution, but they're, they're a little bit concerning to me in terms of how, you know, how many of them are getting built in Springville versus other places? That always makes me kind of question like, I don't see, you know, storage units going up everywhere. Maybe they are, but just a, just a couple of thoughts.
We've talked about our, our commercial uses, commercial zones are probably too, have too many things in them. They probably need to be pared down. So the just timing is having the time to do that. And we really haven't had the time over the years to do that either. So probably somebody needs to be doing.
Storage units are going away. It's, uh, they follow rooftops. Uh, there are storage unit projects from, from all the way from Bellevue to all the way to South of Fayetteville. So that's just something that's going to be done as long as people keep moving here.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't disagree with the sentiment of what do you do with them when they're not used anymore? But, um, they're not, they're not, they're going to keep building them, I guess is what I'm saying. They're not going to be just in Springville. They're everywhere.
They are everywhere. Yeah. Other issues and concerns? Anybody else got anything else they want to bring up? Okay.
So here's a look forward to next month's work session. We're going to brush up on things, the city attorney's office. And and while we're going through some of that stuff, if there are any ideas or concepts that we might discuss um, or even kind of like what we did today in terms of trying to figure out how moving forward we might want to kind of better define or or alter our definition of um, uh, some of the zoning specifically, like we said, uh, low versus medium versus high. And, uh, yeah, I guess, uh, bring some questions in for the city attorney and for for us. And hopefully we can kind of get kickstarted, uh, in the right direction for the rest of the year.
Upcoming planning commission meeting in March, we had an issue with the newspaper not getting the notices published. I think they have a staffing issue like we had and didn't get all the notices in. So a couple of the residuings are going to have to be tabled because they didn't make the newspaper when they needed to. That's unfortunate. I don't know what we're going to do about that because we're kind of at the mercy of the newspaper. Um, they sent us some new deadlines. We'll try to meet those new deadlines, but they had somebody off and they just didn't get them in this time. And so we've got to, I need to visit with the city attorney and see what we do long term. Because state law says we have to have a public hearing, notice published in the newspaper is. Newspapers are getting to be less reliable all the time. So I don't know what we're going to do with that. Just to let you know, a couple of things going to be tabled. Uh, it's not a big agenda. It's big enough, bigger than last time, but not, not as big as we've had in the past. So just to let you know. And you can see the next schedule for the next planning commission meetings, next work sessions and coming months. Uh, anybody got any other comments or questions they want to bring up at this time? We're right in an hour. Uh, we'll sit here and talk all night if you want to, but I know everybody's got other things to do. But, uh.
Hopefully that new chairman can keep things really moving and we'll get out of there, you know, in 30, 45 minutes.
Yeah.
Yeah, congratulations, Neil.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm, I may not be there the next three meetings, so.
I don't think that works. I don't think that works at all. So, yeah.
Hey, and welcome to Mark Cloud.
Yes, welcome, Mark.
This is Gary Compton. We worked together for years in the school district, so I'm, I'm glad you're joining the group.
Thanks, Gary. Appreciate it. Hey, Patsy, if we have, if we have, we have follow-up information on some other thoughts on this map. Do we need, how do we handle that? Do we wait till we meet again? Do we send you a follow-up email?
Send me a follow-up email and then that way I can get the same information out to everybody. Remember, planning commission members aren't supposed to be talking to each other. If you want questions or comments, everybody, you get them to us and we'll get them out to everybody. And then everybody gives our answers back and we send them back out that way. So when you have comments or follow-up, make sure you send it to us.
Perfect.
Okay. Anything else? Then we're going to stop this meeting and let y'all know I have dinner.
Cool.
Thanks, everybody.
Have a good one, everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rick. Thank you, Patsy.
Did you stop the recording?
Not yet.